Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the meeting of the City Council, the Library and Observatory Board, the Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the redevelopment successor agency. This is the regular meeting for Thursday, February 20th. It is now approximately 1:00 p.m., and I would like you to join me in the flag salute to our great country. And please rise and place your hand over your heart and repeat, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Downs?
I'm here.
Councilmember Fromberg-Ettestin?
Here.
Councilmember O'Keefe?
Here.
Mayor Protem Molado?
Here.
Mayor Wile?
Here.
The first order of business today is one that gives me a great deal of pleasure, and it's the recognition of somebody that, as far as I'm concerned, is a hero to our community, a hero to Rancho Mirage. For 25 years, Lieutenant Rick Espinoza has served with honor and dedication in the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, protecting the Coachella Valley and leading with service above self. Rising through the ranks from deputy to lieutenant, his career has been defined by hard work, leadership, and resilience. That resilience was tested and on full display on August 29, 2008, when Lieutenant Espinoza was shot in the line of duty during a traffic stop in desert Hot Springs. Despite life-threatening injuries, he returned to duty in just three months, becoming a symbol of strength and inspiration to his fellow officers and our entire community. In November of 2022, Lieutenant Espinoza took on the role of lieutenant for the city of Rancho Mirage. We are so fortunate that he concludes his remarkable career with us, and we thank him for his courage, leadership, and unwavering commitment to this city. Lieutenant Espinoza, it has been our privilege to have you serve and lead in Rancho Mirage, and we wish you and your family all the best in your well-earned retirement. And I think I speak for everybody on this dais and probably everybody in our community that is so appreciative and indebted for the services that you have provided. I'd now like to invite your daughter, if she is here, Marlena Harris, to say a few words. Is Marlena here?
By the way, Mr. Mayor, congratulations on those words for Rick. Much appreciated.[254.12][254.12](APPLAUSE).
Do I stand here?
Yep.
Okay. It is an honor and on behalf of my family and just all of his friends, just being able to be here, and we'd just like to thank each and every one of you from the bottom of our hearts. We're just so grateful for you recognizing him. And he always told us growing up, he asks us this question and he instills it in his grandchildren as well, "What impact does your name have?" And he tells them, I'm sorry, I'm going to get a little emotional, "When somebody hears your name, what do you want them to think of you? When they see your name, they, you know, know that you're coming, are they going to be excited? Are they going to be happy? Are they going to be, you know, know that you're a role model for other people?" And seeing him, like, with his retirement and where he's at today, we're just so grateful that he not only practiced what he teaches as well. So, thank you, and he'll leave a legacy for his family, and we appreciate that.[331.12][331.12](APPLAUSE).
Well, I must tell you, Marlena, that the gratitude is really from us to you and your family. Lieutenant, would you like to say a few words?[351.12][351.12](LAUGHTER).
Mayor, City Council, and everyone here, thank you very much. I just said it, and I'll say it again, I don't know what I did to be assigned here to the city and to work with you, but I'm grateful. The time I've had with you, the time I've worked with you, Isaiah, has been nothing but great. I have, I don't, I haven't had one bad day working for you guys. I love the assignment, the people that I work with from the station, everyone that has come and been assigned to the city of Rancho Mirage has bought in to the city, and we give back what you guys put out. So, we thank you, I thank you, for allowing me to be here and represent you and my department. So, thank you.
Well, we are appreciative, Lieutenant.[432.78][432.78](APPLAUSE). I want, I want you to stay right there because we have a little something on the table that we would like to present to you, and I will ask the entire City Council and staff to join me down below and make a presentation to the lieutenants. So, if you would, please.
I don't have a cold, so I can shake your hand.[488.19][488.19](LAUGHTER).
Lieutenant, this is a shadow box, and if it's too heavy for you, we can get somebody to carry it for you.[501.62][501.62](LAUGHTER). But, as you can see, it says, "In grateful appreciation of your 24 years of outstanding service, unwavering dedication, and exceptional leadership with the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, we honor your remarkable commitment to protecting and servicing our community. Your tireless efforts and steadfast devotion to public safety have left an indelible mark ensuring the well-being of countless residents and businesses. On behalf of the residents, business, and leadership of Rancho Mirage, we extend our deepest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations. We wish you a rewarding and fulfilling retirement, presented with honor and appreciation to the city of Rancho Mirage." And so, with this, Lieutenant, I hope that you will hang it in a place that you go by occasionally and reflect upon the good memories that you've had with our city, because I can tell you, we have nothing but good memories when we think of you. Maybe not quite as emotional, but certainly as important. We now have a presentation by Keith Young, who is our representative to the Palm Springs International Airport Commission. And Keith, if you would bring us up to date on what's going on there, we would appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, council members and city staff, as always, it's a pleasure to be with you, to provide you these updates. It continues to be my privilege to represent our city and our citizens as we develop this vital transportation and economic resource that is Palm Springs International Airport. Part of what's so exciting about the airport at this point is the growth in passenger use of the airport. As you'll see from this slide, over 3.2 million people traveled through our airport in 2024, and five individual months set passenger all-time records for those months. March of 2024 was actually the busiest month ever recorded in passenger traffic in the history of the airport. Certainly, the airport's master plan has been in the news a lot lately, and I will endeavor to summarize a few components of that and also obviously be available to answer your questions around that. The Palm Springs City Council approved the conceptual development plan for the airport on January 23. Key elements of the long-term master plan include expansion of the airport's gates from 18 to 32, construction of a hybrid rental car center. This is two phases, with the second phase of that center being built as necessary if demand increases as anticipated. This two-phase approach actually addresses concerns that people have had, both in terms of historic preservation as well as the aesthetic, and with this, it allows scalability for rental car demand to not go up if, in fact, in future years, it is less than we currently anticipate. The first phase of that would see a three-story building adjacent to the current terminal. However, two of those stories, as our currently planned, will be underground, so there would only be one above-ground story with that first phase of the rental car center, which is the one that we certainly anticipate will be completed. This stage of the plan does not address design elements for any of the components. It's really about staging the phases, finding the general locations, and addressing scale issues as related to those components. Approval of the plan, and this is a really important thing, allows Palm Springs Airport to initiate the necessary CEQA and NEPA environmental review processes. Those are anticipated to take somewhere between 12 and 18 months, and those have to be, as you all know, completed before the next stage. The first phase of terminal development, if all that goes as planned, is envisioned to include seven new gates, a terminal-adjacent rental car facility, as I just mentioned, a federal inspection station, and this FIS is what allows for direct international flights to Palm Springs International Airport, so that we would have that facility and capacity if this ultimately advances, as well as an expanded baggage claim. Certainly, there's some uncertainty around every component of this plan as it relates to funding. These are large projects with large budgets. Particularly in the current environment, there is uncertainty about these funding sources for some of these things. Discretionary funds from the federal government are feeling less certain these days than perhaps they did a year or two prior. This is a graphic that you're probably familiar with, you've seen on TV and the newspaper, and I've previously presented here, but this highlights key elements of the two phases. On the left side, the orange components here are Phase One on the left and Phase Two on the right of the rental car center as currently conceptualized. And as you'll see, the green box around the portion on the right is actually land that the airport does not currently own, so that would require a land acquisition to build that out in the way that it is currently conceptualized. The gates that would be part of Phase One as currently developed are those that are just above the rental car center on the left, the orange part on the left, and those would be the first new gates. The additional gates on the right, the long terminal there, would be a later phase of the airport development plan. While we wait for that master plan to move forward, there continue to be ongoing improvements in a variety of ways. The shade is just one such improvement. You may have seen this previously. The nude shade structures outside of TSA, as well as one pictured on the left, outside the nine cities food and beverage outlet in the Aguascaliente Terminal. There's also a feasibility study underway looking at shading of the Uber and Lyft pickup areas outside. There's some concern about that, given though that with the master plan, traffic patterns in that area may change, and that mean that any shade structure erected in those areas might not survive that transition. Other important projects that either have been or are nearly complete in the current fiscal year include an important taxiway rehabilitation, water fountain replacement throughout the airport, your commissioner is really proud of those because I advocated strongly for those, roadway signage replacement, the FIS feasibility study, and design of a new baggage handling system. Other things that are, hopefully, will come to pass over the next two or three years, funding and design considerations dependent, are construction of a new baggage handling system, breach gate construction, that's the area as you exit, the secure area of the airport where we go through those turnstile kind of doors that often stop on us. Those are really not adequate for current traffic in the airport, and so it is hoped that those will be replaced, as well as elevator replacement, and possibly toward the end of a two or three period, if funding can be achieved, escalator replacement as well. There are additional retail and food and beverage outlets that continue to be rolled out. This is the newest. This is only, only having opened last month. This is Pink Door, and this is available in the public-facing areas of the airport, so outside of security, so anyone can access this. There are coffee, espresso drinks, both packaged and fresh foods from local vendors, and I understand from the Airport Commission just last night that apparently they're having, they're having to work to keep things in stock because the utilization of this has actually been so high. One priority of the commission and its committees has been to represent and promote local vendors in the airport. Twenty-seven local vendors are currently represented throughout the retail and food and beverage outlets in the airport. We are working with WH Smith, the company that manages that portion of airport operations, for trying to achieve a goal of 15% of sales from local reps, and I'm happy to report that I learned last night that a Rancho Mirage product from our own brand, Danny Toffee, an ice cream toffee bar, may well be making its Palm Springs Airport debut within the next few weeks. There are recent service additions, many of which you have perhaps been able to sample yourself, and some of these are really exciting. Delta began in December offering non-stop service to JFK on Saturdays. Frontier returned to the airport in December with service to SFO in Denver. Porter, the Canadian airline, offers non-stop service to Toronto. And finally, United initiated the first-ever non-stop service to Washington on a Dulles flight that runs daily through April 30. I've been advised that both Delta and United representatives have indicated they've been very satisfied with traffic on the JFK and Dulles routes, and while that doesn't predict any future action, it's certainly what we want to see in terms of keeping expanded air service. There are recent additions to year-round service, so neither of these are new service routes, but they have recently increased to daily, both to Portland on Alaska and Bellingham on Allegiant. And finally, one reminder for any of you who don't have a real ID yet, the previously extended and, I think, reextended deadline for traveling with a real ID is now May 7 of this year, and so in all probability, if you've had a recent driver's license renewal, you have that, but if you don't, you would require a passport or other acceptable form of ID for domestic travel beginning on May the 7th. So, that's my brief summary. Would certainly welcome any questions either now or subsequently, or any feedback that you wish for me to take back to the commission.
Well, thank you, Keith. That's a good report. Obviously, we're very proud of the airport and the job that it does. Are there any comments? Yes, Eve?
I attended one of the commission hearings a few months ago, and I have to commend the city and the commission for their transparency and openness with the communities and their concerns. You've done a really great job at talking to those neighbors of the airport and your residents in general, and listening to their ideas and suggestions about the placement of the buildings, and I think that balance that you've struck with your community is to be commended because, and your firm that you've employed to help with this master plan, they're fantastic.
They are.
So, I just want to commend you as a commission for being patient with that process, letting people have their time, letting their review become part of your ideas. I think that that is what is in the best service for you, and that this airport's going to be fantastic, and it's certainly needed. People are waiting at gates now for flights that don't have arrival points because we're over-impacted, but with our community tourism and what that airport means, I think to all of us, including our city, this is incredible. So, thank you for undertaking this monumental task.
Thank you, and that input is vital to everything we do, and we do take it very seriously. So, thank you for calling it out. Appreciate it.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
So, I think we all know that the primary issue for most people who had criticisms of the initial designs had to do with the rent-a-car building. So, the way in which the Airport Commission came about finding a solution to that, by the way, for those of you who don't know where the rent-a-car building is proposed to be built, originally it was scheduled to be a five-story building, and then it was two stories underground with three stories above, and that still resulted in lots of criticism from, particularly people in Palm Springs about the look of the finished product. So, the way in which the commission eventually came about a solution to that building, I think it's going to create some problems eventually conceivably with respect to when that second building, if and when it's eventually built, figuring out how to engage in traffic easily and conveniently between the two buildings. But it was a solution that made sense for, for the community, for the people of Palm Springs, and for those who had concerns about the aesthetic look and feel of the airport. Everyone wants that airport to look pretty much like it does today, which is a great airport. We all love it, and so I agree with Eve. I think that, that the commission, you and your commissioners are, you did a great job, and thank you for finding a way to come to a solution on that rent-a-car building. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Steve. Any other comments? Keith, thank you very much. We appreciate the report.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the presentation part of the meeting. We will now go to the non-agenda public comments. This is an opportunity for the public to speak on issues that are not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes per speaker. Should you exceed the three minutes, I will ask you to conclude your comments. With that, Madam Clerk, do we have any requests?
Yes, the first speaker is Ken Dench. I'm sorry if I got that last name wrong.
It's okay. Deutsch.
Thank you, council members. My name is Ken Deutsch, and I live in the beautiful community of Del Webb Rancho Mirage. I'm here today joined by fellow Del Webb residents to ask you to preserve precious open space in the city of Rancho Mirage. And let's be clear, we don't want you to referee HOA issues. That's not why we're here. Rather, we need you to be aware of an issue that will ultimately involve the city. Now, here's some background. This past September, our HOA board voted to convert an attractive landscaped park into an industrial yard in the middle of a residential neighborhood. This was done without notifying residents or asking for homeowner input. Another option for the industrial yard would be outside our gates but still on our property. This facility will house landscaping vehicles, leading to pollution, noise, trash, and workers parking on residential streets all day. Our quiet enjoyment of the community is guaranteed in our CCNRs and is threatened by this action, and we must rely on our City Council to help ensure that our peaceful existence is maintained. Now, of course, the residents who live closest to the proposed yard will be most impacted by the negative effects of this decision. They will be the ones to see, smell, and hear this industrial location. If the yard is placed outside our gates that leads to Los Alamos, it'll invite theft as well as the same negative environmental issues. But please note, this is not a "not-in-my-backyard" NIMBY issue. Residents throughout the community are disturbed that a capricious decision by a few will eradicate open space for all in our neighborhood, whether outside the Los Alamos gates or within the community known as the Magnum location. Now, this location was specifically designed as a landscaped park in both the original and final plans that were submitted, reviewed, and approved by the City Council. Nearby residents were told by the builder they would look out on this attractive park area, and it would always be there. While no final decisions have been made, we are here to implore you to deny the destruction of open space in this Rancho Mirage neighborhood when it comes to the attention by our board. Now, on behalf of my fellow Del Webb residents, we thank you for your consideration and for keeping our city safe and beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Christine?
Jeffrey Huling?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. I just hear a resident of Rancho Mirage Country Club, and in the past six, eight months, the city had to take action against Oasis Ranch for the clubhouse, then they had to go in and clean it up, and they cited him for this and billed him for it, and from my understanding is, he has never responded. My question is, how far is the city going to go to maintain this, or will they continue to go back, is falling back into disrepair again, which leaves, weeds, broken tree limbs all over the place? So, how far is the city going to pursue this? Will they go back again and clean up the area and bill them again, and how long will it take before the city will take legal action against Oasis Ranch?
Thank you.
Susan Ragsdale?
I've had her for two months now, and she is a year, and she's a delight, and I'm so pleased. I'm very sorry to have to read something unpleasant to you, however, I'm really hoping, as I said many times ago, to make lemonade out of lemons because it's better. I have a lot of things to present to you, but I only have a three-minute comment. The city of Rancho Mirage is guilty of gross negligence and fraud against me. With these federal crimes, the city gave priority treatment to hostile predatory, vulgar misogynist tenant bullies and the malicious and deceitful property manager. Meantime, I have suffered demeaning, life-threatening, and tragic injuries. I'm asking to be restored to what is rightfully mine, a city apartment. I'm begging, I'm begging you. I could get down on my knees, that's how I feel. I dream about it every morning when I wake up. I'm begging you to make the ethical and compassionate decision to help me, please. I'm headed for my 2006 Toyota Matrix. I'm headed for my 2006 Toyota Matrix. If I die in there, it's a wrongful death. I studied the law for this. I never knew anything about it. I'm asking the city to uphold the Constitution by restoring my civil rights with liberty and justice for all. I want the city to provide justice for me because I am innocent and have been brutally victimized by all concerned, unfortunately. It's very sad. I had a life full of creativity, using abusive and loving grace, using abusive tricks and lies. The city of Rancho Mirage literally stole my life and swindled me out of my retirement, which was $1,700 and a month's social security and affordable housing. That's all I have and I'm 73. Now I'm disabled. I always suffer from extreme traumatic stress. It's anguish from fear. I cannot relax. I will not go back to court for any reason whatsoever. I refuse to become entangled in malice and deceit again. That was more torturous than anything. Besides all the nightmares I have, the city has already crushed my spirit, really crushed it. It's for real. And made me lose the will to live. I'm disabled and can't function. I'm heartbroken because I lost my small family. Regarding how badly the city council treats me, my daughter Asia feels overwhelmingly traumatized and ashamed. In order to cope, she simply had to turn her back on me and pretend I do not exist. I can't live with this situation anymore. So please help me. I also brought some beautiful prayers for you, the Peace Prayer by St. Thomas. Or I'm sorry, St. Francis.
Thank you for your comments.
Yes, thank you very much for the time.
Good afternoon, City Council Administration. So a group, an organization commandeered the public library. From my viewpoint, my estimation, that might be illegal. If the library receives taxpayer dollars, then no group should take, should commandeer and occupy the library for 17 days. That's about a month. The public, which pays in those taxpayer dollars, should not be treated that way. As far as I know, that library is called a public library. So this group that appears to be very rich did that. And I wonder also if the city council signed off on that deal. Somebody said that what goes on locally is a microcosm of what happens at the very top, Washington, D.C., nowadays being run by billionaires, being taken control by billionaires. And I'm talking about the Republican Party and I'm talking about Trump. I'm talking about Musk and their gang. They're all billionaires or they're trying, they're hoping that Trump will make them billionaires. Trump is not a billionaire. He's a charlatan. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
That was the last speaker card. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on something that is not on today's agenda? That was the last speaker.
Thank you. We will now go to the council board member comments. And I will start on my left with Eve Fronberg-Ettlestein. Eve, do you have any comments?
No comments today.
All right. Thank you. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. First, I want to congratulate City Manager Isaiah Hagerman and the staff and my colleagues on the council. From a recent report by the California Policy Center, it's a group that ranks cities and studies their financial handling of local budgets. Rancho Mirage received the highest rating possible, ranked third in the entire state. So all of our residents can be proud that our city is well-run and financially strong. Second, I want to congratulate Preservation Mirage on its documentary film, Richard Neutra's Maslin House. It debuted last night during Modernism Week and it tells an important story about how architectural and cultural preservation became an important part of the story of Rancho Mirage. This is a picture of the Maslin House, which was debuted last night. And it's a beautiful story. It's got a little bit of controversy about it because of the way that the house was demolished. But the legacy it leaves is very important. These are also available for purchase. I want to congratulate, thank you. I want to congratulate Preservation Mirage and Nathan Jacrew and Scott Goldstein, Dave Yakour, Melissa Ritchie, Craig Traupain, and the City Historic Preservation Commission. And to our new film star, Mayor Protem Lynn Malato. She was a featured speaker in the film and it's a great film. When it shows, you should be sure to check it out. Also, I was honored to represent Rancho Mirage at the Fine Food Bank Telethon to benefit victims of the L.A. fires. I also represented our city at the Holocaust Memorial Day of Remembrance. At the McCallum Theater, I was proud to introduce the Rancho Mirage-sponsored National Geographic program featuring astral photography, which was breathtakingly beautiful. It made me proud that our city is the only city with its own observatory. I attended the Children's Discovery Museum fundraiser that raises essential money for the wonderful programs that benefit the children and their families. And of course, the Rancho Mirage Writers Festival has become a world-famous event. So congratulations to Jamie Kabler, Aaron Espinoza, Debbie Miller, all of the library staff and the angels. So our city is filled with great people who do really good things. And tonight, some of those folks are going to be acknowledged at the Chambers Rammy Awards. So I hope I see some of you there. I believe that volunteerism is its own reward. And I encourage everyone to volunteer, make a difference. And recently, some volunteers, hundreds of them, gathered for the Be a Hero 5K Run on February 1st at the Rancho Mirage Community Center. This was a family-friendly event that benefited the Hazleton Betty Ford Children's Program, the Barbara Sinatra Children's Center. It was a wonderful day. And thanks to Kai Beach. We have a short video I'd like you to see.
Children are everything to us. They are our heart. And anything you can do to help a child makes you a hero. Hey, I'm Molly Thorpe. I'm the race director for Palm Springs Marathon runners. We're at Rancho Mirage Community Park and we're expecting about 250 participants today for the Be a Hero 5K Race. It is a great event that benefits the Betty Ford Children's Program and the Barbara Sinatra Children's Center. The goal of our program today is to really let the community know that they are heroes. And by supporting this event, they are helping us in the fight against child abuse.
I'd like to participate and help and donate money, too.
We have community partners representing approximately 25 different organizations who are here today to share their information. And this event lets everyone in the community know what is available and offered free of charge to students in our valley.
It's a chance to come together as a community and do the run and it's for a good cause.
If you're not here today in person with us, we can still use your support. Please contact the Betty Ford Center, Barbara Sinatra Center, and see how you can be a hero and help a child in need. It's an annual event. Every year, we want it to grow bigger and better. And that'll happen through your participation.
Thank you, Michael. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I do want to speak for just a moment about the Writers Festival. So we recently completed another successful Writers Festival and it brought together some 75 of the world's best-known authors, journalists, and critical thinkers. Coachella for the Brain, as it is sometimes called, has become a highly-regarded world-class festival and our city is highlighted on a world stage. The mayor and I are honored to sit on the festival board. And the reason I speak to it today is I want to say a great big thank you to all of the city staffers who worked tirelessly to make this festival a success. So all of our library staff, who worked very hard every day to make it work, all of our library volunteers who helped, all of our city staffers who were there to help control the event and the members of our Public Works Department. So it would not have been a great success without your efforts. And I salute all of you and your dedication and hard work is much appreciated. I know the mayor's going to talk a little bit more about the Writers Festival in a few minutes. A couple of other things that I wanted to talk about. I sit on a couple of outside agencies and I wanted to report on recent meetings of those agencies to my colleagues and to the public. One of them is Visit Greater Palm Springs. Now, the last executive committee meeting for Visit Greater Palm Springs was January 31st at the Agua Caliente Resort Hotel. VGPS is important to the economic success of the Coachella Valley and to Rancho Mirage. In the city of Rancho Mirage, about 31% of our annual operating revenues comes from TOT, transient occupancy taxes. And most of those TOT taxes are generated by our destination resort hotels, the Westin, the Omni, and the Ritz-Carlton. And VGPS helps drive visitor traffic that pays those TOT revenues. Now, the executive committee at the last meeting approved a set of goals for 2025 and we reviewed all of the accomplishments of 2024. I'm going to share just one of those 2024 accomplishments today. Convention sales. The convention sales group at VGPS overachieved in surpassing the 2024 room-night goal for convention sales. More than 237,000 room nights in this desert, many of them right here in Rancho Mirage. Now, that goal or that achievement was about 9% above our last pre-COVID numbers, which were back in 2019. And it was also about 15% higher than the goal that was set by the executive committee for 2024. So VGPS is doing an effective job in attracting travelers to our destination and helping to generate those important TOT revenues. The other outside agency that I sit on that I wanted to speak to you about today is the Coachella Valley Association of Governments Transportation Committee. So the last meeting of the Transportation Committee was on February 3rd at the Seavag Meeting Room in Palm Desert. Now, I've raised this issue before here in this chamber and I want to raise it again because I did discuss it at the last meeting. The issue I raised and that we've discussed in the past, and I believe it's very important to us here in Rancho Mirage, I asked for the Transportation Committee to hold, to put an item on the agenda for our next committee meeting so that members can discuss the issue. And the issue is this. The Riverside County Transportation Commission, some years ago, several years ago, developed what's called the Traffic Relief Plan and a 1% sales tax to support that plan. The TRP, it's a broad plan to address and improve local roadways, major highways, and public transportation throughout the Riverside County and Coachella Valley. Now, there are separate plans for three different Riverside County geographies, one of which is the Coachella Valley. Now, the TRP was to be funded by a 1% sales tax that was to have been on the ballot in November of 2024. Now, most sales tax measures require a 67% supermajority vote for passage. RCTC had hoped that passage would be subject to a new California law that would have allowed passage with a 55% vote. But the state legislators decided against the 55% vote. So as public surveys indicated that the measure would pass, but only with a 60% vote, that tax measure was pulled. That doesn't mean it won't come back. RCTC will have to fight the battle in the future and they are going to. So what's my issue? Why am I talking about this today? And what do I think we need to do about it today? Voter surveys that the RCTC conducted about use of those funds, most of the voters suggested that what they wanted those funds to be used for were to fix and keep our local roads in good working order. Now, in the other two Riverside County RCTC regions, each city would have received a share of that tax revenue. And that's probably what would be planned again in the future when this measure comes back to the ballot. The only city in, the only cities in Riverside County that were not to achieve or to receive some share of those funds were here in the Coachella Valley. Seavag, Coachella Valley Association of Governments, was set to receive 100% of those funds. Here's a problem. And the problem is that our Public Works Department in this city and the Public Works Departments in every city in this desert, they are the groups that actually repair the local roadways that the citizens who were surveyed said was the most important use of those funds. Help me understand. Why is it the case that not one cent of those revenues would come to this city to do that which the voters said they wanted done? Well, that's why I'm talking about this today. It is the case that this measure will come back to the ballot either in November of 2026 or November 2028. Sounds like a long time off. But if we are to fix this issue and make sure that we get our fair share of those revenues, if and when this tax measure is passed, we need to start working on it today. And that's why I brought it up at the Transportation Committee at the last meeting. That's why I asked it to be on the agenda for our next meeting so that the Transportation Committee can put a stake in the ground with the opinion that some of those funds must come to our city. In my opinion, it should be similar to the way in which Measure A funds are divided among the cities and with the Coachella Valley Association of Governments, we get 35% of those dollars. We should get 35% of these dollars if and when this measure is passed. So I propose that the Traffic Commission discuss this matter and stake out an official position. And I also encourage the mayor, who sits on the executive committee of Seavag, to do the same with the executive committee. And I encourage Councilmember Fronberg-Ettlestein to do the same. Eve now sits on RCTC. She's our representative to RCTC. And together, we need to make our voices known that we expect to get a fair share of those tax revenues if and when this measure, not when, but if, I'm sorry, not if, but when this measure comes back to the ballot, November 26th or November of 28th. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Steve, and I can assure you that as chairman of the Seavag Executive Committee, that I will ride herd on that issue to make sure that we get an allocation because, as Steve points out, we're the entity that does the work. So it is critically important. Mayor Protam Malado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all for being here today. Good news, my council comments were items that my colleagues have already spoken about. The second good news, I'm not going to torture you with my gravelly voice. So I'm going to limit my comments today. I'm grateful for all of you being here today. Thank you.
The important thing, feel better. I'll embellish a few things as far as the Writers' Festival is concerned. The 11th Annual Writers' Festival took place, as most of you know, February 5 to February 7 at the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory. Again, dubbed the Coachella for the Brain, the festival brought together over 70 acclaimed authors, political figures, and cultural icons for engaging in discussions on politics, history, humor, literature, and more. This year's theme, the United States Semi-Quintennial, honored the nation's upcoming 250th anniversary in 2026 and set the stage for thought-provoking conversations. With 1,450 attendees, the festival delivered dynamic and diverse lineup of panels and speakers, ensuring an unforgettable experience for all. A heartfelt thank you to festival founder and chairman and president Jamie Kabler, along with the festival library and city staff, whose dedication makes the extraordinary event possible. Aaron, I see you sitting there. You deserve a bow. Thank you for your efforts. And a very special thanks to our 588 angel donors, whose generosity funds 89% of the festival and allows us to create a world-class literary event featuring some of the finest writers in the world. I can't begin to tell you the amount of goodwill and publicity that we get in Rancho Mirage as a result of this event. It is recognized worldwide. Enjoy this video of some of the highlights of this extraordinary event. If you would play that, please.
Some say that life is a collection of shared stories. Then it follows that the written word elevates those stories to an art form. And this year, the Rancho Mirage Writers' Festival honored that tradition with an inspiring program of thought-provoking discussions and unforgettable storytelling.
This is amazing. You know, there's just, you know, a wide array of voices and, you know, really talented people and, you know, really engaged readers and stuff. I mean, what's not to love?
Now celebrating its 11th year, the Rancho Mirage Writers' Festival's theme, the United States Semi-Quintennial, honored 250 years of American history and culture.
We know we're doing it a little bit early, but we felt like celebrating the 250th anniversary of the United States of America needed a two-year celebration. So we're starting this year, and then in 2026, our theme will continue.
Founded in 2014 by Jamie Kabler, the festival has earned its reputation as Coachella for the Brain by drawing literary lines, cultural icons, and award-winning authors from around the world to the heart of the California desert.
Such a world-class event that we get to have in the valley. I'm actually a local myself, and I love being a part of this event and welcoming people to our wonderful home and celebrating the written word and exchange of ideas, and it really is Coachella for the Brain.
Each year, the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory becomes a vibrant hub for writers, readers, and intellectuals, providing a space where creativity, exploration, and meaningful dialogue thrive.
It's remarkable that in a city the size of Rancho Mirage, you become the center of the literary universe for a couple of days.
This year, the festival kicked off with Angel Night at the Omni Rancho Las Palmas Resort, featuring keynote speakers John Meacham and Brian Williams.
For me, it's like being at a rock concert and seeing people backstage. These are the names on my bookshelves, and I'm very lucky to be among them.
It's a remarkable group of people of different interests but common purpose, and the common purpose is to tell great stories, and hopefully those stories shed some light in a world that's way too given to darkness right now.
This event brought together writers, community leaders, and attendees, sparking new connections and inspiring fresh ideas.
Love this event. Honestly, we look forward to it all year, and what Jamie does to pull this off and all the other staff, it's just a wonderful event. It's so full of fun.
And Debbie gets credit, too. She works really hard at this, so we're happy to go back here. Thank you.
The official festival began the following morning, continuing its tradition of captivating literature lovers year after year.
It's the greatest collection of storytellers you could ever find, and that's what we need right now, is good communication.
Over the next few days, attendees experienced over 70 lectures, conversations, and panel discussions. The authors that participated have been awarded Pulitzer Prizes, National Book Awards, Pushcart Prizes, National Book Critics Circle Awards, Peabody Awards, Grammys, Emmys, and Tonys.
The Rancho Mirage Writers' Festival is the absolute best. It's intellectually stimulating. It's enjoyable. It's in a great location, and it's a pleasure to be here again.
I feel like I'm on an endless red carpet full of celebrities who are smarter than the people who might show up at the Golden Globes, not quite as polished in terms of how they look, but I like texture.
As the festival unfolded, guests shared insights over lunch, reflecting on the books and stories that have had a lasting impact on their lives.
This is beyond cool. You know, when you look at the lineup of speakers and the lineup of authors, it is world-renowned. They're world-renowned.
Since its inception, the festival has left an enduring mark on the community, donating thousands of books, offering free programming to the public during the year, and inspiring the next generation of writers by including students and scholars from local high schools and universities.
There's a lot of important people here, a lot of people that I'd love to get to introduce myself, get to know them, figure out, you know, what led them to where they are now, and how can I apply that to my journey.
The event closed with a special appearance by Bill Gates and historian Doris Kearns Goodwin, offering profound insights that set the stage for the next chapter in this remarkable celebration of literary excellence.
My dad's festival is the best Writers' Festival in the world. It's been going for 11 years, and I just think it gets better every year.
Turning the page, the Rancho Mirage Writers' Festival will continue to inspire future generations of thinkers, writers, and storytellers.
It was a great event. For the first time, the Writers' Festival was livestreamed all 2025 festival sessions free of charge, making the event more accessible to the community. The response was remarkable, with 333 views on Angel Night, over 21,000 views throughout the three-day festival, and 969 views of the Bill Gates event. For those who couldn't attend, all sessions will soon be available on Rancho Mirage Writers' Festival YouTube channel and broadcast on RMTV Spectrum Channel 17, so stay tuned. Just a terrific, terrific event. With that, I will now transition into city manager comments, and if he has any or does not, we will then go directly to the consent calendar. Isaiah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just a few comments before we get into the consent calendar. The first one that I wanted to address was the city's housing. So the city has an obligation to provide a harassment-free environment within our housing properties, and so that's what we strive to do. And we will also follow the court ruling when they review such cases. When it comes to abatement of properties within the city that fall into disrepair, there's been times in the past, and I expect times in the future, where we have had to abate the same property multiple times. We try not to abate, but when a property owner does not comply and clean up the property themselves, then the city will step in and do that, and then we assess those charges on the tax roll. When it comes to, you know, a potential maintenance yard at Dell Web, so thank you to the residents that showed up today to express their concerns about losing open space. Currently, our planning department has had some informal conversations with HOA board members from Dell Web on the topic of a maintenance yard, but nothing has been submitted yet. So we appreciate you showing up today and expressing your concerns on that topic. With that, we'll go ahead and go to the consent calendar for the council. So you have six items for consideration. Item number one is to approve the January 16, 2025, regular meeting minutes. Item number two is to approve the appointment of Gary Farrell to the Rancho Mirage Traffic Safety Commission. Item number three is to adopt Resolution Number 2025, Next in Order, adopting the city's investment policy. We do this on an annual basis. The changes this year were very minor and just keeping up with changes in government code sections. Item number four is to receive and file the December 31, 2024 Quarterly Treasurer's Report. Item number five are contracts, and item number six are the demands. Before we go to council comments or questions, I'll ask the city clerk to take any public comment on the consent calendar.
Thank you. I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak regarding an item on the consent calendar? No speakers.
Are there any council comments regarding the consent calendar?
I do, Mr. Mayor. So I would like to speak for just a moment to item number two, the appointment of Gary Farrell to the Rancho Mirage Traffic Safety Commission. So Gary is one of my neighbors at Rancho Mirage Country Club. He is my nominee to the commission. He is here in the chamber today. Gary, I just want to say thank you very much and applaud you for appointing, for nominating yourself to the commission. We're happy to appoint you. My guess is that it is probably likely that my colleagues will go along with my nomination today. So Gary, welcome.
And thank you for your service, Gary. Are there any other comments, any kind? I'll entertain a motion, please.
I will move, I will make the motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion in a second, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
The next item, we go into the public hearings, and the first one will be introduced by Jessica Pulliam, our deputy of sustainability regarding adopting Resolution Number 2025, adjusting electric generation rate. Jessica?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and hello, council members. I'm here today to provide an update on the Rancho Mirage Energy Authority, as well as to propose a RMEA rate reduction, as well as to discuss the drivers of rising electric costs. Over the last four years, electricity rates have continued to rise. The graph shown on the screen now shows that since 2021, SCE's delivery and transmission costs have risen by nearly 60%, while RMEA's generation portion of the bill has risen about 17%. The average residential customer went from paying 25 cents to 36 cents a kilowatt is where we are currently at. We can see that delivery and transmission costs are a large driver of why electricity has risen so drastically, and this is not a portion of the service that RMEA controls or has any jurisdiction or authority over. This is something that all SCE customers pay regardless of whether they are with RMEA or not. RMEA has kept its generation rates stable and remains committed to affordability. To date, we have saved our customers over $4 million, and we have launched three new rebate programs to help our customers take control of their power. We are encouraging them to reduce their bills through reducing their energy consumption through efficiency measures, reducing time of use costs by providing a battery program that provides rebates, and helping with the transition to electric vehicles by offering rebates for EV chargers. To help offset rising costs, I'm requesting that city council approve a generation rate decrease, which will result in approximately $900,000 coming from the Rate Stability Reserve Fund for fiscal year 2025. This adjustment will help mitigate rising costs and assure that our customers continue to receive reliable and affordable energy. This concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions.
Thank you, Jessica. Are there any public comments regarding this item?
I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? No speakers.
All right, are there any council comments? Well, it's a great program. Jessica, you do a fabulous job administering this, just outstanding. And I must tell you that many times, we on the council will get inquiries from our constituents when they receive a bill that, you know, gee, the bill is very confusing. I don't understand it. There is a charge from SC Edison, there's a charge from RME, RMEA. Could you explain it to me? And my answer is, Jessica, handle it. And Jessica immediately comes to the rescue, and every time, they are well satisfied. So again, thank you so very much. If there are no other comments, I'll ask for a motion, please.
I'll go ahead and make the motion that the city council adopt Resolution Number 2025, Next in Order, approving adjusted rate schedule for Rancho Mirage Energy Authority.
And I'll second.
Motion in a second, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. The next item will be handled by Marcus Alimon, our housing manager, and it's regarding the consideration of approving the issuance of, by the California Municipal Finance Authority, of tax-exempt revenue bonds, if you would. Marcus?
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor Wile, city council, and city staff. This item before you is a public hearing pursuant to the Federal Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982, commonly referred to as TFR. TFR requires that a public hearing be held by the governing body of the jurisdiction in which a project to be financed with tax-exempt financing is located, and that the governing body approve the proposed financing. The Pacific Companies has asked that the California Municipal Finance Authority, the CMFA, be the issuer of tax-exempt financing in an amount, to finance or refinance the acquisition, construction, improvement, and equipping of a multifamily rental housing project located south of Villa Vale, east of Key Largo Avenue, west of Monterey Avenue, within the city of Rancho Mirage. The California Municipal Finance Authority is a joint powers authority formed to assist local governments, nonprofit organizations, and businesses with the issuance of both taxable and tax-exempt debt. The debt is to be issued by the CMFA, will be the sole responsibility of the borrower, borrower, and the city will have no financial or legal obligations or responsibilities regarding the repayment of the debt. All financing documents will carry disclaimers that the loan is not an obligation of the city. The city will also bear no costs in the issuance of the proposed debts. This is a private loan with the borrower and their bank. Staff recommends the city council adopt the resolution approving the issuance of bonds by the CMFA for the borrower. Such adoption is solely for the purposes of satisfying the requirements of TFR, the Code, and the California Government Code, Section 6500. This concludes my presentation. I am available for any questions. Also in attendance to answer any questions is Jared Suzuki of the California Municipal Finance Authority. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcus. Are there any public comments?
I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item? No speakers.
The clarification that Marcus made is important because we're always asked, what is the liability and responsibility as far as the city is concerned regarding these municipal bonds? And the answer is zero. We have no responsibility whatsoever. This is merely a formal procedure that's required for the issuance of the bonds, but again, the city bears no liability and/or responsibility. Are there any additional comments from my colleagues?
Mr. Mayor, the only comment I have is that this is an important addition to our affordable housing stock in the city of Rancho Mirage. So as we know, we've been discussing this issue for a couple of years now. We will probably continue to discuss it for a couple of years yet to come, but it's critical that this project be built as soon as possible, and I'm happy to see it moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Steve. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion, please.
I'll move that the city council, A, conduct a public hearing under the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982 and the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, as amended, and the related treasury regulations on the proposed issuance of tax-exempt bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority, and B, adopt and approve Resolution Number 2025, Next in Order, approving the issuance by the California Municipal Finance Authority of tax-exempt revenue bonds for the purpose of financing the acquisition, construction, equipping, and improvement of a multifamily rental housing project.
I'll second.
There's a motion in a second, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. The next item on our, on our agenda is the Privé Villas. The next item on our, on our agenda is the Prevail Villas, a very interesting project. And that's going to be presented by Pilar Fletchroot, which requires tutoring as it relates to the pronunciation of her last name, because it's reasonably new, but we're happy and excited for her. So with that, Pilar, if you would.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, City Council. Let's give a moment for the presentation to come up. There we are. Today for your consideration is Prevail Villas, a proposed 3D-printed residential development by Palm Coast Modular, located at the southeast corner of Villa Josefina and Ginger Rogers Road. The project requires a general plan zoning map amendment to rezone the site from very low-density residential and medium-density residential to low-density residential RL3, which allows up to three dwelling units per acre. The zoning change will enable the development of 28 residential lots, maintaining compatibility with the surrounding neighborhoods. Tenanted tract map 38868 proposes a subdivision of two existing parcels into 28 residential lots and four common lots, conforming to all development standards under the RL3 zoning district. Lot sizes range from 12,000 to 14,542 square feet, with the density of 2.8 units per acre. The site will feature a gated entry, a 37-foot private roadway with the cul-de-sac, and retention basins for storm water management. Each lot will accommodate a 3D-printed modular home with a detached ADU and two-car garage, as well as a private vehicle gate. A secondary emergency access will be provided off of Villa Florencia. The rendering showcases the development's modern architecture, featuring clean lines, geometric patterns, and expansive windows that integrate indoor and outdoor living. The structures will have a maximum height of 12 feet and integrate seamlessly with the landscape. This rendering highlights textures one and texture two, which offers a further architectural depth. Texture one includes vertical accent panels created in a dynamic facade that interacts with natural light. Texture two uses shadow and subtle variations to add architectural interest while maintaining the clean, modern aesthetic. Those textures enhance the visual identity of the development while ensuring compatibility with the desert landscape. This rendering highlights texture five, featuring a bold, vertical diamond pattern, adding a dynamic three-dimensional quality to the facade. The light and shadow interaction across the surface creates a dramatic visual statement while maintaining the clean geometric language of the development. The residences contain neutral and earthy colors, with materials selected for durability in the desert climate while ensuring a seamless integration with the surrounding landscape. The community entry and parkway includes drought-tolerant landscaping, native shrubs, succulents, and a tree-lined parkway, meeting Section 30 Landscape Design Guidelines. An initial study was conducted for the project, resulting in the recommendation for an adopted mitigated negative declaration. Mitigation measures were proposed for biological resources, geological resources, and cultural and tribal cultural resources. On January 9th, 2025, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to review the project. The commission recommended approval of the project to the City Council. Following the meeting, staff identified the potential use of prefabricated pools within the development, and now recommends an additional condition of approval to ensure compatibility with the city's general plan in maintaining the use of high-quality materials. Public hearing notices were sent out on January 29th, 2025. We received one comment, which has been distributed to council prior to today's meeting. Staff recommends that the City Council make the action as shown on the screen. This concludes staff's presentation. I would now like to invite the applicant to the podium. Staff is available for any questions. Thank you for the consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, and staff for your time and consideration today. My name is Adam Nestor, and I'm the CEO of Palm Coast Modular, and we're here today seeking your approval for our 10-acre residential development. As Pilar already stated, most of the details, Prevail is 28 lots with a front house and back house that are both 3D-printed, unique structures. We have modern architecture and sustainable features that come built in. The project site is close to Ginger Rogers and Villa Josefina, occupying 10 acres, less than a mile north of Cotino. Lots of beautiful developments going up in the area, and our houses are going to fit right in. What else here? We, our, our homes are unique, so the 3D-printed manufacturing brings very high quality, and they're extremely durable, very low total cost of ownership, and one of our main themes is to blend in seamlessly with the desert. Many of you have already been out to our Desert Hot Springs development, and it's good to see you again. You've seen the construction, and there's a picture on the left of the walls going up. They're actually printed in a factory and shipped to the site, and then we stand them up on a slab-on-grade. You can see some of the different textures on the right there. Literally, we can print just about anything into these panels. There's very big windows, kind of oversized features, impressive buildings. If you actually go up and touch one of those monolithic panels, you get a sense of, there's sort of a grandeur of them, and the interiors are modern, kind of a European look and feel. The product itself is manufactured by a partner, Mighty Buildings. They use a 3D-printing process to actually print the walls, and then some more robots come in and do some milling, and then there's a polishing process, and then they get painted, packed in a crate, and shipped to the site. And as I mentioned, when they're delivered to the site, we just stand them up, put the roof on, which is also a prefabricated component, and we can have the building shell up in a matter of days, literally a week, you have a house standing. Talked about sustainability, so the actual material itself is very similar to concrete, but it's lighter and lasts longer, will not degrade when exposed to water like concrete. We say it'll last 10,000 years. Who knows? I won't be around, but the polymer itself uses some waste products, specifically from aluminum processing, so that would normally get thrown out, but we're actually building the walls out of it and using something that's wasteful. There's hardly any wood in the construction, so these homes are fire-resistant, and maybe that applies more out in LA where I'm at, but they won't, they wouldn't burn down typically, not a big deal out here. Very good insulation and soundproofing. The walls are about eight inches thick after you get all the drywall on. And we're going to add gray water systems, and we intend to have enough solar capacity so they're pretty much off-grid, try to use no power. Again, here's our Desert Hot Springs development. We have 20, 10 lots completed, 20 homes. It's going to be the same exact construction method here in Rancho Mirage, just on a bigger scale and much nicer houses. Okay? And that's it for my quick presentation. Any questions?
Well, I will comment that, as you, as you mentioned, a number of us toured your, your development in Desert Hot Springs. You know, you, you preconceive ideas when you hear 3D printing, at least I did, and I said, you know, what kind of a house is going to come out of a printer? Obviously, this is quite remarkable, and it's almost like a tilt-up situation where things are delivered and then assembled on, on the site. And extremely attractive, and are selling well there, and I'm sure that they will sell exceedingly well in Rancho Mirage. So again, we were, we were most pleased with your product. Looked extremely good. Are there any other comments that my colleagues have?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Adam, thank you again for arranging for our tour for the product that you're building up in Desert Hot Springs. It, it made it much more real to us after we saw your presentation at the Planning Commission last month. I do have a couple of questions for you. One, would you speak for a moment to the sustainability of this product? So you talked about fire resistance. One of the other issues that is more likely to occur for us is, is earthquakes. So talk to us about sustainability and how this product will survive those kinds of events.
Sure. So regarding earthquakes, they're absolutely up to California sizing standards. The, the 3D-printed walls themselves have high-strength steel going around them, very thick, heavy-gauge steel. They're not going to fall over. We, we say they're bulletproof, not that that's our concern, but they, they're rock solid. I wouldn't worry about it. The sustainability side, probably the, one of the main things about it is the factory-built nature of it, so there's very little waste in the construction. We're not going out to the site and cutting a bunch of two-by-fours and throwing lumber in the, in the trash. The manufacturer actually procures all of the product and material and sends it to us, basically. So that's a very tightly controlled supply chain. We don't have as many quality issues because of the factory-built nature of it. There's tighter quality control there. Very, they like to say, well, we want to say net zero carbon, but I don't think we're quite there yet, carbon emissions, and there's still a little bit of carbon emission that you net out of this. Yeah, that's, I think that captured.
And tell us about the utility expense to, once you live in one of these, one of these buildings. So we just had a presentation by, by Jessica about RMEA and what's happening to electric rates in the city. What about living in this building? What will your utility costs be like compared to a traditional construction?
Well, hopefully they'll be lower. There's a whole lot of insulation. Like I said, the walls are eight inches thick, and, and they go beyond the minimum, I think, which is R24, R39, depending on where you are. The inclusion of a whole lot of solar panels is, hopefully, you won't have an electric bill at all, and be able to charge your EV and run your pool pump and, and all that good stuff. There might be a, a battery option, so we have backup power, and if the power goes out, you'll be good for a little while, as long as the sun's shining. Yeah.
And tell me one more thing that I think is going to be different here in Rancho Mirage versus the product that we saw in Desert Hot Springs. Tell us about the look of the exterior panels that we will see here in Rancho Mirage versus what we saw in Desert Hot Springs. And also, secondly, tell me about the pool construction. I have to tell you, that's, that was my least favorite issue about the Desert Hot Springs product, so tell us about that.
Yes, sir. We heard about the pools. So the 3D-printed walls, some of them will be like what you saw, but then we have these parametric panels, so that's how we spice it up a little bit in the front facades. We don't want it to all look the same like cookie cutter prefab homes, so we can put a number of these different textured panels on the front and the sides of the house to kind of break up the lines and make things look different. The pools, so what you saw in Desert Hot Springs was a, a very cost-effective way to put a pool in. They're fiberglass pool shells that we just drop into a hole and then put some concrete around to make it look nice, but we will not be doing that here. These homes demand a, a really cool pool, let's say. So they will be, we're going to let the buyers probably tell us what they want, design them, you know, you want stamped concrete and a rock grado or just some straight lines or, they'll be nice pools.
Thank you, Adam.
I'll invite you for a swim.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Actually, that was one of my points when we inspected the, the property, that I anticipated that your, your pools in Rancho Mirage would be more conventionally built.
Yes, sir. Shotcrete. Yep.
Yeah. Any other comments?
I'd like to congratulate you on your next building. It's, it's solid. I was most impressed with your steel beams and insulation. I think one of the most attractive components, especially given our recent experiences with Los Angeles, is that it's fiber group. Insurance, insurance companies will most welcome that. And it's been a time when, as a road tour during the day, it's very difficult.
For a new homeowner or purchasing, a person purchasing a home is having difficulty getting insurance, so this would be most welcome.
Yeah, and we're looking at going into the, the burn zones to help rebuild. I actually live out there, so very close to one of the zones, and these might be a good fit, for sure.
Terrific.
Any other comments? Yes, please.
How do you foresee long-term maintenance on this home as compared to traditionally built home? Sorry, pardon my voice.
It should be lower. That's one of our main selling points. The fact that you don't have any wood means you'll never get termites, and every, every home in SoCal has termites usually. So the wood won't get eaten, it won't rot, it won't mold, there, there is no wood. You, the panels are so durable, there, there's very little to do them. You can go out and, we just pressure wash them to get dust off, but they look just brand-new when you do that. They can be painted any color if you wanted to. I, yeah, I think when, when the design is meant to be sustainable, and, and part of sustainable is long-term durability and low cost.
So no issues of cracking on those polymer panels as there are a succo?
No. No, we haven't had a, a single crack once they're standing. There was one that maybe got put down a little hard, and we opened it up and it was cracked, but.
Be careful with them.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
Michael?
Adam, I want to thank you for being here today, and I, for one, think that the technology is innovative and new, and I love the designs. I liked everything about it, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion, please.
We still have to do public comment.
Oh, we did, but any, any public comments?
No, I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to provide comments on this item? No speakers.
All right, thank you. I'll now entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and make the motion that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 2025 next in order, approving and adopting the mitigation monitoring and reporting program and mitigated negative declaration for the proposed project based on environmental assessment case number EA 24-0001, and B, adopt Resolution Number 2025 next in order, approving the general plan zoning map amendment to change the underlying zoning designation of the subject property from very-low-density and medium-density residential designations to low-density residential, three dwelling units per acre max. Tenanted tract map number TTM 24-001, and preliminary development plan case number PDP 24-0001.
Does that motion include the addition of condition of approval 22A as presented by staff?
Where was 22A?
That was regarding the pools.
Oh, yes. I appreciate that.
Start over.
Especially with regard to the question that I asked. Yes, it includes, what, what is the condition? Say it again.
22A as presented by staff.
22A, including condition 22A. Thank you.
There's a motion, I know I have a second.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Congratulations, good luck on the project. The, the next item on the action calendar is an annual review of development agreements, and that's going to be presented by Leslie, Leslie, is it, Leslie Perez, Assistant Planner, if you will, Leslie?
Before you get going with the presentation, I just wanted to give an overview for everybody about how this will work. So we split this into four items, A, B, C, and D, and so based on various potential conflicts of interest, these motions are set up so that certain council members may recuse themselves on the various items. And so just for a member of the public, there will be four opportunities to speak, and so we will have a presentation for the development agreements identified under A, and then there will be a public comment period, and then a motion by the council, and then B, same process over. New presentation, public comment, motion by the council, C, and D. So depending on what item you're here to speak on, if you wait until that presentation comes forward, we're going to have four sets today.
Leslie, if you would, please.
Thank you. I'm going to wait for the slides to pull up. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item 10 is the annual development agreement review. Today, I'll be giving four different presentations. This first presentation includes a review for the Rancho Mirage self-storage, Westin Vacation Club, Mecana, Ferrari, Section Vacation Club, McKenna, Ferrari, Section 31 Specific Plan, In-N-Out Burger, tentative tract map 36620, Porcupine Creek Wellness Center, Eisenhower Memory Care Administration, and Desert Island Hotel. Displayed on the slide is a location of each project site undergoing review. This periodic assessment is for the year of 2024. The city's municipal code requires periodic review of active development agreements to determine if the subject property owner or developer is performing in good faith with the terms and conditions of their respective agreement. The table summarizes the status of each agreement's current standing. All 10 development agreements are considered to be in good standing and in compliance with the existing terms and provisions of their respective agreements. As a courtesy, staff mail notices and send emails to all affected property owners and/or developers informing them of this meeting. Staff has not received any comments for this item. Staff recommends that the City Council consider finding that the subject developers and/or property owners are currently in compliance with the terms and conditions of the 10 development agreements. This concludes my first presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any public comments regarding 10A in and of and by itself?
I did not receive any speaker cards for that. Is there anyone who would like to speak on 10A? No speakers.
Are there any council comments regarding item 10A? If none, I will entertain a motion for item 10A in and of and by itself.
I'll go ahead and do the motion. That the City Council find that the subject developers and/or property owners are currently in compliance with the terms and conditions of the following 10 development agreements: Rancho Mirage Self-Storage, Weston Vacation Club, McKenna, Ferrari Section 31 Specific Plan, In-N-Out Burger, tentative tract back 36620, Porcupine Wellness Center, and Eisenhower MCA, and Desert Island Hotel.
And I'll second.
There's a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. We'll now go to 10B, if you would, Leslie.
Before she starts the presentation, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. The council member Downs will be, due to a potential conflict of interest due to the proximity of his residence to the project, will be recusing himself, but he may either step down from the dais and leave the council chambers, or may sit in with the public and listen as an interested member of the public and/or address the council as an interested member of the public if he so wishes.
Thank you, Colin. I will choose item B. I will sit with my neighbors.
Can we pull up the slides, please?
Okay, I think we can proceed, if you would. Leslie with 10B.
The second presentation is a review of the development agreement for the residences at the Rancho Mirage Country Club. The residences at the Rancho Mirage Country Club is located off Frank Sinatra and Bob Hope Drive. The development agreement is active until June 1, 2034, which is found to be in good standing per staff and city attorney review. Staff has not received any comments for this item. Staff recommends that the City Council consider finding that the subject developer and/or property owner is currently in compliance with the terms and conditions of the development agreement for the residences at the Rancho Mirage Country Club. This concludes my second presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Kristi, are there public comments?
Yes. Alan Wall?
This is so grand. I wrote what I was going to say only because I'm a little bit nervous. I've never spoken in front of you people before. Good afternoon, Mr. Wall and City Council members. My name is Allyn Wall, and I live in Rancho Mirage Country Club. I'm somewhat of a newbie, as I didn't buy my home until 2022. Last night, I had the opportunity to watch the April 18, 2019 council meeting on YouTube, when the council approved this development agreement. It was exciting to see what was planned and thrilling for our residents when the council voted to approve the DA 5-0, as evidenced by the energetic audience applause. I'm here to thank you for the incredible amount of work put into the project and into our community. It was evident from City Council, it was evident from City Council member comments that they had spent many hours on the ground, working with us over many years, to solve issues as they arose, and it was evident that they cared. We are disappointed the project did not come to fruition, but I remain confident that we will come out of this limbo, the limbo that we are in, a stronger, more informed community than we were back in 2016. I'm also confident that when we finally do have a developer to build out a project, you will be by our side every step of the way. So this was just to say thank you for all the work that you've done for us, because I know that sometimes you get other messages sent your way. Thank you.
Thank you for your thoughts.
That was the only speaker card. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on 10B? No additional speakers.
Thank you. Council comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion regarding item 10B.
I'll move that the City Council find that the subject developer and/or property owner is currently in compliance with the terms and conditions of the development agreement for residences at Rancho Mirage Country Club.
And a second?
I'll second.
Motion carries 4-0 with Councilmember Downs recused.
All right, we'll wait for Councilmember Downs to return to his seat.
And while we play musical chairs, for this next item before you, Mayor Protem Malato and Councilmember O'Keefe will also be recusing themselves due to a potential conflict of interest due to proximity of their residence to the subject development. They will leave the dais and will either leave the chambers, or may sit in the audience as a member, interested member of the public.
Why does it always seem, why does this seem so lonely for all of us in the moment?
We're dropping like flies.
Yeah. Okay, we can proceed. Leslie, if you will, 10C.
Thank you, Mayor. This third presentation is a review of the development agreement for the Rancho Mirage Auto Center. I'm sorry, for Del Webb.
Del Webb.
The Del Webb community is located off Dyna Shore and Los Alamos Road. As of today, all 1,029 homes have been built. This project is in compliance with the DA requirements and is in good standing. Staff has not received any comments for this item. Staff recommends that the City Council consider finding that the subject developer and/or property owner is currently in compliance with the terms and conditions of the Del Webb agreement. This concludes the third presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Kristi, any comments, please?
No, I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on item 10C? No speakers.
Okay, are there any council comments regarding item 10C? If not, I'll entertain a motion regarding item 10C.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor, that the City Council find that the subject developers and/or property owner is currently in compliance with the terms and conditions of the development agreement for Del Webb.
And a second? I guess...
I'll second.
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries 3-0 with Mayor Protem Malato and Councilmember O'Keefe recused.
And we're now at item 10D.
Thank you, Mayor. For a last round of musical chairs, we will have the former, the council members rejoin us, and Councilmember Fromberg Edelstein will be recusing herself due to a potential conflict of interest on this item.
Leslie, if you would, item 10D.
Thank you. This fourth presentation is a review of the development agreement for the Rancho Mirage Auto Center. The Rancho Mirage Auto Center is located off Highway 111 and Mirage Road. The final development plan case number FDP 21-0005 was approved, and the Volvo and Service building permits are ready to be issued. Based on the provisions of the DA, staff has determined that the DA is in good standing. Staff has not received any comments for this item. Staff recommends that the City Council consider finding that the subject developer and/or property owner is currently in compliance with the terms and conditions of the development agreement for the Rancho Mirage Auto Center. This concludes my fourth presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any public comments?
I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on item 10D? No speakers.
Thank you. Are there any council comments regarding item 10D? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on 10D.
I'll make the motion that the City Council find that the subject developer and/or property owner is currently in compliance with the terms and conditions of the development agreement for Rancho Mirage Auto Center.
Second. There's a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion carries 4-0 with Councilmember Fromberg Edelstein recused.
All right, we will wait a moment till Councilmember Fromberg Edelstein returns. Glad to have you back, Eve. It was emptiness without you.
It always is.
The last item on our agenda is item number 11. That's going to be presented by the Director of Public Works, Ryan Stendell. Ryan, if you would, please.
Absolutely. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. The item before you this afternoon is a contract, a staff report and contract associated with one of the city's important special revenue funds. I do not have a PowerPoint presentation for you this afternoon, but I will employ a very quick tactic that I've used successfully called "Follow the Money." If you look in your budget book in the special revenue funds tab, you will find Section 248. Fund 248 is funded by CSA 152. This is essentially a voluntary assessment district that we have participated in since 1993 with the county, which helps us administer stormwater programs that are requirements by the federal government. Some of the activities that are taken with this money are storm drain cleaning, catch basin cleaning, and street sweeping. This provides a funding mechanism of approximately $150,000, $160,000 annually. Again, it is completely voluntary. The contract that is on the agenda is an initial term of five years with two two-year extensions for a total of nine years. This is consistent with past terms with the county. They do all the administration, they collect all the funds through the property tax rolls, and they distribute to the member agencies. So with that, staff would recommend approval of said contract and are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Right, thank you. Are there any public comments?
There are no speaker cards submitted. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? No speakers.
Seeing none, I'll ask for council comments. All right, there are none. I'll entertain a motion for item 11 on the action calendar.
I'll make the motion that the City Council approve the administrative services agreement for CSA 152 NPDES program with the Kip County of Riverside.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, kindly vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
That concludes our action calendar and the items on the agenda. We do not have a closed session today. This evening, we have what's called the Rammies Awards, which is put on by the chamber honoring all of the local businesses. It's a wonderful event, so we're looking forward to participating in that this evening. And if there are no other issues at the moment, I will conclude this meeting now.